I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, I know we have one addition to the agenda tonight, Del Fest Contract. You want to make that 3A?
Yes, 3A.
Yeah, we'll vote on that at the top of the action agenda.
We need a motion in the second to add that.
Yeah, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
On favor.
Aye.
Any further additions or deletions?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second?
On favor.
Aye.
Alrighty. Starting off tonight, we have Ms. Beth Thomas. It is National Cyber Security Awareness Month.
Good evening, Commissioners. And as part of partnering with the Department of Homeland Security in highlighting the importance of cybersecurity to our homes, our workplaces, our schools, and on our mobile devices. Physical safety is second nature for us. We don't think twice about locking doors and looking both ways before we cross the street. October gives us the opportunity to reflect on being, thank you, being vigilant of our cyber threats as well. Small actions such as setting strong passwords, treating your personal information like it's money, and being cautious about what you receive and read online can make the Internet safer for everyone. Thank you very much.
Great. And we do have a proclamation for you.
Hope everyone adheres to that because speaking to someone that had my identity stolen year before last through, it was the federal government that actually had it stolen and it cost me about $900 that year for LifeLock and I'll have to have them paid forever now. And now I have to have a special ID number because my social security number is no good for nothing. Thank you, federal government. It is something to really take seriously.
It is. It's been reported that most Americans spend at least 10 hours in front of a screen.
Because it was a shame that they was the one that actually called me and said, oh, your identity has been hacked through us. And I said, what do I do? And they give me LifeLock's number and said, we recommend you get them and you pay for it forever.
LifeLock probably is the one that stole it.
Yeah. It was actually, it was actually given to a prisoner in California so he could get a refund check.
Wonderful.
That the federal government gives them a refund check every year and they...
One in your name. We did bring some tip sheets if anyone would like to take those home with them, tips on how to avoid phishing, cyberbullying, and identity theft. They're right up here.
Cyberbullying, creep.
Not much for... They'd have to come to the computer, but boy.
And this reads, Allegheny County Government is supporting the efforts of the U.S. Department of Homeland Security to promote increased cybersecurity awareness. Cybersecurity benefits are not without risks. Every individual should assume responsibility and take steps to create a safer Internet for us. We, the Board of Commissioners, support the Stop, Think, Connect campaign and proclaim October 2017 to be National Cyber Security Awareness Month in Allegheny County. That's presented by Jake Shade, Creed Brody, Bill Valentine. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth, for keeping your safe. Thank you. Yeah, that's right. Then we'll have an ID there.
All right, item number two, we have Allegheny County Health Office, Janelle Mayer for National Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week.
So, National Red Ribbon Week is a nationwide awareness campaign. It's focused on alcohol, tobacco, and drug use prevention. It's something that we support every year and we are happy to have the Commissioners' support. And you're even wearing your red ribbon. So, thank you very much for your support.
All right, we have a proclamation. Come one up. Whereas, the Red Ribbon Campaign is the oldest and largest drug prevention program in the nation. It reaches millions of young people. The child's future is filled with unlimited potential. However, a child has only one and only one future. The Board of Commissioners wants all children to grow up safe, healthy, and drug-free. The Board of Commissioners want to be part of the creation of a drug-free America and wishes to support the Red Ribbon Week and endorse 2017 campaign of your future is key so stay drug-free. We proclaim October 23rd through 31st to be National Red Ribbon Week in Allegheny County. And that's the 26th day of October and that's signed the County Commission, Creed Brody, Bill Valentine, Jake Shade. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can we get a picture with you, please?
Thank you.
All right, item number 3A is the, is the contract. Mr. Rudd, did you want to tee this one up?
Sure, why not? Finally, finally, we have the contract for, between Del Fest LLC and the Commissioners for rental of fairgrounds for years 2018 through 2022. It's been much discussed, radio, television, newspaper, Internet, wherever. And anyway, it's here for your consideration and I recommend its approval.
Great.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve, accept?
Second?
On favor.
Aye.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We've both these copies here.
Yeah, there are two copies, one which will be for each party, for all three Commissioners to sign each copy, please.
And we will also be signing again next Friday.
Or watching the McCurry sign.
I see.
Thank you, sir.
There we go. And before we move on, I do think it's important that there's an explanation given of why this has taken so long. And I think that the public just deserve that. And this started when? December 15th, in this boardroom, when one Commissioner announced a five-year deal been signed. And that was surprising since we hadn't discussed it, but it was good news and I was happy to hear that we had a new five-year contract. That turned out not to be true. Later, we found out despite our tourism director telling us her intention to retire, one Commissioner took it upon himself that the county would reverse course and the tourism contract would not be put out to bid. He didn't tell his fellow Commissioners that, but that promise was made to Del Fest. I spoke to the press nearly two weeks later and said the tourism contract would be put out to bid. In fact, the RFP was already done and finished and completed. Because of that, I've been bashed, trashed, and said I've been anti-Delfest. And that simply isn't true. It's never been true and it isn't true today. I've been happy to support the festival in every vote, statement, public pronouncement, public and private, as is every single person in this building, including Mr. Everly. Three months later, that same tourism contract out to bid was passed unanimously by this We have one Commissioner who has continuously told Del Fest that we are not supportive of them, knowing that it's not true. My reputation with them has been tarnished, has been poisoned, so much to the fact that Mr. Strickland still has not spoken to me today. And I'm happy to change that. I don't think Mr. Strickland or the McCurrys have an axe to grind with myself, Allegheny County, or any individual. And it's unfortunate they've been misled for so long and it's taken all this time to do that. I'll add this. We could have set up a meeting earlier. That was not chosen to do so. We could have pushed back against the false narrative that people in this building, staff, the President of the Board of Commissioners were against Del Fest. We chose not to do so. We could have pushed back against the false narrative that somehow after 10 years, Del Fest was getting a bad deal. We chose not to do so. We could have pointed to the $47,000 in Internet upgrades, agreed to unanimously. We chose not to do so. The $2,400 for an added American Airlines magazine, again, we chose not to do so. And again, it continues tonight. Will Jake vote for it? Will he vote against it? Will he sign it? Will he show up on November 3rd? All of which are false. They've been false since the beginning. And once again, it continued this week, on Monday. All three Commissioners, our Director of Public Works, our attorney, we sat there and made changes to the contract and purposely, purposely, I said okay. I said sure. I agreed with what the other Commissioners said. One Commissioner led the discussion on their request for $25,000 for electrical upgrades. Mr. Cale was told by Roy Carter that they believed that was their expense. Mr. Rudd said that they had put it in at the last minute expecting to get it and didn't think they'd have any pushback. It was agreed by the majority of the Board of Commissioners to take it out and I agreed with them. Yet Tuesday morning, 16 hours later, the next morning, when Mr. Rudd was talking to Mr. Strickland, turned out that one Commissioner had already promised that to Del Fest. And more incredibly, it was blamed on me, that I was the one who demanded, demanded that that $25,000 reimbursement be taken out. And time and time again, when given the chance to resolve this, it hasn't happened. The fire hasn't been extinguished, it's been fanned. And I'll just say this, Commissioner Valentine, I've lost, I've lost a lot of respect for you since last December. I don't expect an apology. I don't think that that's going to happen in politics, but I do think you owe apology to the staff of this building and for the citizens of Allegheny County that's had to put up with this melodrama for the last 11 months.
Well, I would suggest you get your facts right, Mr. Shade.
Anything that's not true about that, we can, we can check the email, we can check all of it, Bill.
Get your facts right. We can have a private discussion about this.
Well, you know what?
Anytime.
We had a discussion on Monday in private, in private. The Board of Commissioners decided to do that in private without any notes, any recordings, any documents. And why was that? Because blame could be shifted easier. When we're up here, when we're in public, it's a lot harder to hide. It's a lot harder to change the narrative. And it's not true and it's never been true. And it's insulting what's going on in Allegheny County for the past nine months. And I'm happy to have Del Fest here. I want them to have a second festival here. I think Del Fest is happy to be here, but they've been misled, they've been misinformed, and it stops tonight. And I look forward to meeting Mr. Strickland next Friday. I look forward to meeting Dell himself for the second time. I've met him once and who was that set up by? That was set up by Dave Everly. Dave Everly, when we painted the train car. So, to say that Allegheny County is somehow against Del Fest or doesn't want them here, we're happy to have them here. We want them here. We want them to expand here, we want them to invest here, and we want to be part of that solution. But all this political stuff, please look past that. Please look past what's going on and in the games and all of that stuff because it's not right and it's not the government that you deserve. Item number three, we have Ms. Janelle Mayer with Allegheny County Health Department.
All right, we are here today because we've had extreme difficulty hiring a medical director, psychiatrist, for our mental health clinic. And it's something, we're not alone in this, other local health departments are struggling as well. So, we are currently filling the position using a temporary staffing agency and paying a very, very high hourly wage plus travel costs, hotel costs, mileage for that temporary physician to come out. One of our temporary psychiatrists is willing to take on the position and our one difficulty with that is there is a salary cap that the state puts in place. So, our ask to the Commissioners is to provide a salary supplement so that we can pay our medical director, psychiatrist, the market rate. And then we will be reimbursing Allegheny County for that cost through our mental health collections. So, what we're really asking for is just the mechanism to be able to pay him more. It will be no cost to Allegheny County.
Great. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second?
On favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Janelle. Next up, we have Hamilton Relay Lease Agreement.
All right.
Mr. Barclay.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. What we have here with item number four is we're asking for the Board of Commissioners to approve a, an extension, a lease extension with Hamilton Relay, a company out of Aurora in Nebraska, for the One Science Park Building in Frostburg Industrial Park. This, this is actually the third lease extension that we've had with the company. They employ 200 people at this facility. They are a multi-state company and we're definitely proud to have them, have them there. They provide a hearing impaired translation service. And we just did some capital improvements for the company. We've had a great working relationship. We've replaced the, our public works department donated some of their time to put a lateral, the water lateral into there was, was kind of a piecemeal project from years ago and we took care of that this past summer. And we do have another capital improvement project planned up for next year to repave their parking lot because it's getting in pretty rough shape. We've been just doing some piecemeal work, patchwork on potholes that would show up. So, this is a big deal. It's a, it's a three-year lease with additional three-year, additional one-year options afterwards, three of those. So, this is a good thing.
Great. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to renew this lease.
Is there a second?
Second?
On favor.
Aye.
Thank you. And item number five is Riverside Traffic System.
Yes. With this situation, we have here in our own Riverside Industrial Park, Road Safe Traffic Systems, formerly known as Protective Services, Inc. We, the Commissioners agreed to sell the company in 2007, 1.48 acres, Lot Number Nine in the industrial park. And this, that property, they did all the capital improvements, build a building and have very successful business. They've actually operated the business the past 57 years out of Cumberland with local operator Danny Dawson. And they currently support 15 businesses at this location. And the good news is, is with us agreeing to sell .11 acres, a 25-foot swath in there, it will allow them to build a 3,000 square foot building to house their multimillion-dollar pump trucks that do painting. And they will also be able to hire eight new full-time employees.
Jeff, I do have a question on this, if you gentlemen don't mind before we vote. The reason we're going through this is because they want to expand and they couldn't get a permit because we, as the adjoining property owner with property against the river, was denied because they didn't have enough for a setback.
That's correct. They, with this building, they...
Who denied them?
The city of Cumberland.
It was not us. Correct.
Right. They, they need the setback.
I've been hearing someone has said it was not us, that we wouldn't issue a permit. And this and that, said, no, it's not us. So, that's why we're transferring this ground to make this happen.
Right. The issue was, was heard before, I guess, the city's attorney. And they were denied and that's why then, Mr. Danny Dawson, his son is here this evening too, if you would like to come up and say it.
Come on, Dustin, get up here.
Dustin.
We're happy to do this for you guys.
We were approached and, and we saw that this was a win-win for everybody to make this happen.
Absolutely. No-brainer.
Yeah.
Hello. I'd like to first thank the county for jumping on this so fast, especially Mr. Barclay. And thank you guys tonight for getting it on the schedule. I, Danny Dawson is my father. He, Road Safe used to be Protection Services and Road Safe is the nation's largest traffic control and railroad safety equipment company in the country. We applied for an expansion for their, a new building in their parking lot because Road Safe approached my father, Mr. Dawson, saying that he needed to expand, he needed to hire more employees, and they would provide new equipment if he could do so. The lot is narrow and it has an odd configuration. And with the size of building, they need to house the equipment and the employees that he needs to facilitate those trucks. We asked for variance from the city, which was denied. And we decided to get a strip of land through the County Commissioners if it would be eligible to be sold so they could get the size of building they need. And with this strip of land, they'd be able to hire more employees and house their trucks that they need to make their company grow.
Great. Happy to do it. And what's .11 of an acre go for these days?
About 1,300 bucks.
Sounds good. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Nope.
Thank you, guys.
On favor.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, moving to our consent agenda. Mr. Everly.
Commissioners, good evening. Tonight, we have 10 items on your consent agenda for possible action. Item six is a motion to authorize the President of the Board to execute a grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development, accepting $128,000 through the ESG program on behalf of HRDC and the Family Crisis Resource Center. Item seven is a motion to the Allegheny County State Attorney's Office to issue an RFP for the acquisition of an automated case management system for integration into the state court system. Item eight is a motion to appoint Ms. Frankie Revelle to the Allegheny County Social Services Board through June 30th of 2020. Item number nine is a motion to appoint Janelle Mayer to the Local Development Council as the new institutional member of that board, and also appoint Alan Ruby and Mr. Sam Wilson. Item 10 is a motion to approve Resolution 17-29, amending the county's rules and regs, amending the language on the utilization of accrued leave under Section 7.5. Item 11 is a motion to authorize the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office to accept a $7,000 grant by MDOT to enforce aggressive, impaired, and destructive driving violations. Item 12 is a motion to authorize the acceptance of the 2017 Hazmat Emergency Prep Grant in the amount of $10,200 for planning and training for the Department of Emergency Services. Item 13 is a motion to declare surplus, two vehicles and various equipment in the possession of the Department of Public Works and authorize their disposal. Item 14 is a motion to declare surplus, seven vehicles currently in the possession of the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office as surplus and authorize their disposal by auction. Item 15 is a motion to authorize the Department of Public Works staff to seek a grant through the USDA for the purchase of a new dump truck. Commissioners.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion. Will you accept the consent agenda?
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Mr. Everly.
Nothing further, sir.
Oh, oh, yes, thanks, Bill. Yeah, please read that into the record.
It's only sitting right in front of me. Commissioners, October 26th, a letter to the Allegheny County Board of Zoning Appeals. This is in preparation for the signature of all three board members. Commissioners, the letter goes, "Dear Board Members, the Board of Commissioners of Allegheny County wishes to take this opportunity to formally enter our opposition regarding Board of Zoning Appeals Case Number 952, set for public hearing on Wednesday, November 1st, 2017. The applicant, Allegheny Junctions LLP, is seeking a setback variance to construct a multi-tenant residential complex northeast of Old Legislative Road in Midlothian, Maryland, 21 feet from an adjacent property line. The minimum setback standard set forth in the Allegheny County zoning code specifies a buffer of 50 feet for adjacent property lines for planned developments. Although the zoning classification of the property allows for a planned residential development, we suggest that the applicant evaluate other properties in our community which are better suited for this type of development. Thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration in this request." Commissioners, your request?
I'm good.
Anything? All right.
Swear on my glasses.
Mr. Rudd.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to say. I do want to acknowledge my son, Bill Jr., who's part of the paleo army sitting out here. Since he and I both got mentioned on the radio, there he is. Everybody there knows him, so welcome.
Get the camera around it, Bill Rudd.
And Bill Rudd Jr., if you don't mind, since I was also mentioned on the radio, I'd like to have a couple of minutes of your time after the meeting tonight, right? You and anybody else who wants to stick around, okay?
Junior's the one with the hair, right?
No, there isn't. Don't go there. You see, he has a hat on. He has a hat. He has hair on his face.
I'm not saying...
He did get the bulge.
It just slipped out.
That's your son, right? There's no doubt.
There's no doubt.
There's no doubt. Commissioner Valentine.
Number one, table to death, we finally have the five-year for Del Fest in place. And number two, yesterday at the Kerwin Commission, which we're studying how to make education a little bit more affordable and work better in the state of Maryland, we spent almost a year coming up with policy recommendations, but nobody's ever put a dollar amount to any of these recommendations. So, we decided to be absolutely foolish to ask the legislators to try to pass what's probably going to be in the billions of dollars without putting some sort of a dollar amount on it. So, the way it looks, our work will not be finished at the end of December the way it's supposed to be. We're going to do some work groups and try to break out some figures, see how existing funding can be shifted around, make things a little bit more equitable. So, those actions will not be before our legislators this, this session.
Great. Commissioner Brody.
Sir, I'm going to keep it short because we have another event to attend and I need to go home and get the air up on a certain truck to get up the road. So, first of all, anyone that's interested, the airport is finally starting its big project. We're having a groundbreaking ceremony there Monday evening at 4 o'clock. That's for the new runway expansion project. It's been in design since the 90s and we did get approval in like 2005 or '06 that it was going to be approved as part of the Mid-Atlantic Regional Airport Layout Plans for this expansion. It's actually to get the runway in compliance. They're actually not increasing the airport size, they're just getting the runway in compliance because it's, it's out. So, it's, it's going to be a big deal. It's going to be about a $40 million project and we're finally going to kick it off. All the funds is in place. We got, which is, is quite interesting because you're working with two different states and two different counties.
And the federal government.
And the federal government. So, there's five entities involved there and it's just been a fantastic project. I'm glad to see it get going.
It's a long time coming.
It sure is. And it's going to be a good thing because we're hoping that it'll be a little bit more draw, or a bigger draw to our area because it really is... Anyone that's never been there needs to come out. And Mr. Wilmont, I'll take your question in just a second. Anything, or you can talk to these gentlemen, I do got to run. Gentlemen, the one thing I will say after tonight's meeting, just the three of us do real well together. Do not let someone else pawn your games because I went through this exactly four years ago, just about to the day, over the airport. And it was someone else behind the scenes because one thing I've learned after sitting here for seven years, a lie spreads like wildfire. The truth you can't kick out of your way, but a lie will spread like wildfire. And people like to believe the non-truths. So, gentlemen, I respect both of yous. I knew this was going to go and I knew both of yous was going to make this happen, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Creed.
Make sure you get those air brakes working.
See you shortly. That's why I'm leaving. Mr. Wilmont, sir?
Is this going to extend the runway?
It actually is.
How far?
I think it's, right now, it's like 5,600 feet. I think they're going to make it right around seven.
That will allow us to have larger aircraft?
It will. It actually, what it does, it gives you a safety barrier at the end, so...
And how about the weight of the aircraft? Is the runway...
The runway is capable now of handling, but the problem is, is you got to have so much, according to FAA regs, so much safety zone.
Safety zone.
Yeah, so...
That's awesome.
Okay. Thank you. I'll see you, gentlemen, shortly.
And last, we have some good news coming Monday. Our solar farm is going to go up on, on the grid in Mexico Farms. That's a long time coming. Thanks, Mr. Barclay, Economic Development, for getting that done. 220 homes, is that the equivalent to what it'll power, I think? Something like that. So, that's something. And I think it's the first one in Allegheny County of that size. And that's going to be on county property, some sort of lease agreement we've done there. And that's, that's been a long time coming too. So, to see so... So to see some of these projects finally coming to fruition is good. And with that, I don't think we have anyone signed up to speak tonight. No? Okay. Our next public business meeting will be Thursday, November 9th at 5:00 p.m. in this building. See you then.